The Beaver fans are not enjoying the same kind of season as soon as I'm done.
No, Cowboys, LSU, Gandhi Center is gonna be right into the season. I think he's been miserable last couple of years there. There are suggestions that he's tanking it, so he's gonna be bad by now.
We don't plan any more, which I hate.
Who was the August counselor? Been out riding lately?
I have, this weekend, yes.
Yeah? Oh, cool. And then whenever you're ready, let me know. You ready? Everyone ready?
Thirty-one.
All right. I will call to order the Common City Council meeting for the city of Brookings for Monday, September 22nd, 2025, 5:32 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Monberg?
Here.
Counselor Paredes?
Here.
Counselor Martin?
Here.
Counselor Pennington?
Here.
Mayor Hodges?
Here.
We have a forum.
We do, full house. Nice. Moving on to Item D, Ceremonies, Appointments, and Announcements. We had the August Yard of the Month awards. Commercial, the commercial yard was Premier Ocean Properties, and the residential was Carlo, I don't know the state of France, Palacio, and Francis Hartman Palacio. So, who was the counselor?
I just got confirmation from Brooklyn. It was me.
It was you? No one you didn't remember.
So I felt pretty silly, but I was like, who was that? She goes, it was you, Tim. Okay, so, yeah, yeah, this went really well.
You remember that?
I'm not gonna remember, yes.
Excellent. Well, that's great. Do we have another month or are we done now?
No, I think September.
September?
Okay. Very nice.
Beautiful yards, thank you for that. And then the second piece under Item D is the National Emblem Club Week Proclamation for Emblem Club 265. And I have a proclamation up here. Let's read off the real one. I'll go ahead and get started on this. City of Brookings proclamation. Whereas the members of the Supreme Emblem Club of the United States of America in promulgating community service have actively engaged in seeking out the worthy and the needy in every community, and whereas their assistance and guidance to young men and women is evidenced by great numbers of scholarships assuring the advanced education of the deserving, and whereas the requirements of those who have special needs are considered and fulfilled insofar as can be, and whereas the members are vitally concerned with the immediate and permanent needs of those placed in stress by reason of flood, quake, hurricane, and other disasters of nature, and whereas these are dedicated to the principle of philanthropic endeavor, and whereas be it resolved that the deeds of dedicated charitable members of the Supreme Emblem Club of the United States of America be recognized. Now therefore, I, Isaac Hodges, Mayor of the City of Brookings, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the week of September 22nd, 2025, as National Emblem Club Week. In witness whereof, I, Mayor Isaac Hodges, do heretofore set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Brookings, Oregon, to be affixed this 22nd day of September, 2025. All right. Would you like a picture with your proclamation? I'll come down there.
I don't have a good side, so. You wanna be in the back somewhere?
Okay, come again. No hiding.
Quest, girl.
One, two, three, one more. One, two, three, there you go.
Thank you, would you take it out, Mike, please, real quick? Oh, shoot. That'd be hit it to the heart, I would imagine.
Very good. One, two, three, one more, one, two, three, there you go.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it, appreciating us. We do wanna do things for the community, and we try really hard to keep it in our community, and there were some things, you know, veterans, administrations, that helped them pause programs. But we'd like to help the Wally's House, the bank, we desperately need help this year. So, upon it.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Moving on to Item E, Oral Requests and Communications from the Audience. I have a little script to read here first. This is the time for public comment if you have turned in a public comment form to the city recorder. Comments are limited to five minutes. This is not the time for discussion. Counsel is not able to provide an immediate answer or response. The city manager may direct staff to follow up with you regarding your comment or questions if provided with contact information on the form. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address into the microphone for the record. So. So first up, I will call, in the order I was, or the order I have stacked, I don't know how they came up, actually, Don Bemis for Reeds Across America.
Yes, hello again. And again, this year, this is our sixth year placing wreaths on the veterans' graves. You're all invited December 13th at 9:00 AM at the cemetery. We have well on our way to cover every veteran again this year. Some of our corporate sponsors are the Mill, Premier Ocean Properties, the Brookings Harbor Veterinary Center, and several others, the Life Festival. And with the donations of the public on our outreach that we do at McKay's and Bymar, we're still, again, able to match every donation. So we're well on our way to cover every grave again. My partner Debbie is gonna have breakfast snacks. Jessica Carlson's gonna sing for us. Court Boyce is coming down. You're all invited. Mayor, you spoke last year, you're invited to speak again, and everybody is speaking. And Court Boyce is gonna be there. And weather permitting, Dan Bratton will fly over again. And he's committed, as far as last year, he said he would, and I haven't talked to him again this year, but weather permitting, he usually wants to do a flyover for us. And then in Gold Beach, they have their ceremony at noon, so I get to attend both of them. But that's going well, and we're trying to find volunteers to help us, because we're getting up there, it's getting difficult for me to walk the cemetery, so we're gonna try to do that as well. We have an ad in the Insider, but we'll see what we can do, try to keep it going, but I just don't want it to stop. So that's, that's pretty much it. Any questions?
I do have a question. If any members of the public or those listening want to contribute, either volunteer services or financially, how would they do so?
You have flyer in front of you that Michelle passed out. There's a sponsor sheet on the back, and that's, you can mail that into Reeds Across America. There's a code number, an ID number, OR0047, that you need to put on your personal check, and then they come direct to our cemetery. Their wreaths are all made in Maine, and they're delivered out here by truckers who donate their time and fuel. And the Elks Lodge is gracious enough to let the truck driver park in their lot when we get volunteers to take them up to the cemetery.
Thank you. City manager, would there be a way to make this available to the public?
Sure, we can, we can get this on our website and our Facebook page, too.
Appreciate that.
No problem.
But everything, again, everybody's invited, and we had a good time last year, and we had our flyover as well. So we've had a flyover every year, and it works out very good. Thank you all. Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Good seeing folks.
Thank you very much. Next up is Florence Savercul?
Saver.
Okay.
Yes, I would, my name is Florence Savercul, and I live up on Mr. Ridge.
Okay.
So every day I come off that hill to go into town, and I have to come down Parkview and the intersection of Highway 101. It is getting worse instead of better, the speed limit that people are coming into town and going out of town. And on Labor Day, I happen to be T-boned, I was very fortunate, I wasn't hurt. But somebody is going to be hurt at that intersection if something isn't done about the speed of those cars coming into town and going out. We just had all those new sidewalks put along the street there, and they've decreased or shortened the four lanes so that you get into two lanes before you go around the corner. There's a 35 mile an hour speed limit sign there, there's one on the bridge just before you get to the church, and they are still going 45 and 50 miles an hour when they come out of town. And it's, it's just, the police can't be out there every day, all day long, writing tickets, but a light, I think, is essential, and if you need someone to get out and get signatures on some type of petition, I'm more than willing to do that. But it's a very, very serious situation, and I'm afraid somebody is gonna be hurt very seriously.
Thank you.
I realize the city has to work with ODOT on this, but still, it needs to be addressed.
I hear you, thank you. So last up, I think, because I know his name, I'm having trouble reading it, but I believe it's Gordon Clay, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Come on up, Gordon.
My writing hasn't gotten any better.
That's okay.
For the record, my name is Gordon Clay, I'm off of Cape Cod and Northern Brookings. This is Suicide Prevention Month, and next month is Bully Prevention Month. And I wanna say that last year, we had 11 suicides, which put us fifth in the state on suicides for 100,000 people. We are the 27th largest county. That's just going the wrong way, being fifth in suicides and being 27th in suicides. So far this year, we've had five through July of this year, and it looks like we're on the same trajectory. I wanted to bring a particular awareness today to a situation that's happened with our government, and starting, are you familiar with 988 Suicide Prevention Hotline? Well, up till July 17th, somebody would call or text in as 988 plus 1 for veterans, plus 2 for Spanish, and plus 3 for LGBT. On the 17th, all funding for plus 3 has been removed in all federal programs, which include 988. And so we've got a situation where we are, have abandoned part of our community here in kids, because I know a number of LGBT and a couple of trans kids in this school district. And so what I wanted to bring up, and I know Del Norte County has followed my recommendation since 2016, and that is crisis text line, 741741. This has been the best forever, even before 988, but I wanna bring particular attention to it now, because 76% of the people in Oregon that go texting 741741 are youth under 25. And 56% of all texters, regardless of age, are LGBT. We have a really beautiful opportunity to ensure that that happens. The school district in Del Norte hasn't done 988 ever, because they know the problems with it and the way to really get good information. The big reason that I promote 741741 is they are the only text crisis line in the United States that I'm aware of, and I've been working this since 2016, that uses AI. And why that is so important is because they set up the whole thing for texters, on how texters work, and texters, youth particularly, use a lot of emojis when they are in crisis. A psychiatrist, a social worker, a counselor on any voice or text line, crisis line, has no way of understanding what that means. But they do, because they've got over 10 million convos, that they've tracked all different kinds of emojis, et cetera, and if you know the emoji with the two tears, that, if that appears in a texter's texting, that means that that texter is in a six times more dangerous position of being involved in an active rescue during that conversation than if they had used the word suicide. And there are different levels, and on here, you can go to this website and see if you can tell me which is the most important, but all 24 that are on that list are more apt to go on to, need an active rescue, which means getting, going to the suicide-at-risk questions to determine if this person is in suicide risk at that time, and then if so, to get involved and get emergency there. What happens otherwise is the text lines, particularly Lines for Life, which does 988 here in Oregon, 741741 is also the backup for the national. But the, what they work on is bringing somebody from hot to cool. The danger there is if they are successful, that might be, I mean, that would be great, but they don't know if they've solved the problem with them, and they don't have a contact to get back with them and see if they're still on the earth. And so they've temporarily gotten somebody off of a suicide track right then, and then there's a possibility that the person doesn't make another call.
Gordon, what you're saying is very important, I hate to interrupt, but you're over five minutes, so can you, can you wrap, wrap it up, please?
Yeah. Thank you very much for listening, and spread the word. I will be talking to the school, actually, I already have talked to the school and to the county. So thank you so much, sorry for my verboresity.
It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda, yeah, that's all I have, three? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item F, Consent Calendar. So we have the council minutes for August 11th, 2025, the monthly financial report for July, and the monthly financial report for August, 2025, all three of those.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Call the question.
Counselor Monberg?
Yes.
Counselor Paredes?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Bolton?
Yes.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to G, Staff Reports, Public Carriages, Ordinances, Resolutions, and Final Orders. The first one up is the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Brookings and Curry County.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, what you have before you tonight is the intergovernmental agreement for Curry County and the city of Brookings to provide community resource officer services for the harbor. A little background on this, for those that might not know, we were approached by Curry County to provide patrol services in the harbor and South Curry County area, and the city and the county hosted a joint workshop in July of '25 to discuss potential IGA for the two agencies, and during the discussion, the county also inquired about the possibility of utilizing a community resource officer to assist in county agencies in dealing with primarily the issues in harbor. Assisting would be creating and maintaining rapport with all the individuals in that area, like our current community resource officers do, and they do a tremendous job. They would also participate in opioid and substance abuse disorder training, intervention, rehabilitation, essentially dealing with a lot of transients, and instead of just simply dealing with the issues of the encampments, dealing with the individuals and trying to get them help so homelessness issues are reduced. After the meeting, the staff evaluated, and our current manning, and we let the county know we wouldn't be able to provide or even put out anything for patrol services. Subsequently, the city and the county met again in a workshop in August to specifically discuss the possibility of utilizing a halftime CRO. After the workshop, the county and city, legal counsel worked together and agreed upon language for the IGA. The county, excuse me, the county approved the proposed IGA at their Board of Commissioners meeting on September 3rd. We had another joint workshop that was held on September 10th to discuss any outstanding issues with the proposed IGA, such as use of the opioid funds, labor union issues, liabilities, et cetera. Staff followed up with our labor attorney, Diane Amoff, and our insurance, CIS, to make sure that we were fully supported by all entities involved. So what you have before you tonight is the, the agreement that has already been passed, that was proposed and passed by Curry County, and I have with me tonight Chief McCray and Lieutenant Dodson for any additional questions regarding if this IGA were agreed upon, the implementation of it as well, and any other questions. There were some questions earlier, and I have brought some of the, the questions and answers that were regarding the IGA as well tonight, too. So, saying that, just open it up to any questions, unless the chief or lieutenant Dodson have anything they would like to add. Nope?
Not right off, no, thank you.
Any questions or conversation, comments? I appreciate all of you being here and the work that went into it, I know there's been a lot. I wonder, you know, if those FAQ, I call it FAQs, the questions anyway, they received, would be valuable just to?
Sure.
Maybe go over just some of the highlights?
Public, yeah. Absolutely. So there were a couple of questions in regards to the IGA. There was one question specifically dealing with the Section 11B on page 21, the word MOU appeared, and that was inadvertent, this is not a memorandum of understanding, this is an intergovernmental agreement, and that was caught, and that will be corrected if it's agreed upon tonight. Also, there were some questions about the potential liability of enforcement in dealing with encampments and dealing with what the county currently has on the, on the books as far as ordinances go. Our city attorney, Lori Cooper, responded by saying she's reviewed the IGA language, and although it doesn't explicitly state the CRO would be enforcing camping ordinances on the property, in fact, the IGA doesn't state whether the CRO will be enforcing county law, city law, or both. The IGA has a mutual indemnity provision, so if there's any sort of legal lawsuit issues regarding the camping, both city and county would be, have the responsibilities to defend themselves or each other. And in order for the city to steer clear of any potential liability as it relates to camping violations, she suggested the CRO not issue any camping citations on county property, or require anyone to remove their camp on county property, and that's, that's the key word right there, on county property. If you look at the majority of the issues that I think she's referring to, those happen along the corridor off of Highway 101, and we have ODOT that we work with currently, if we have any of those issues here in the city limits of Brookings. Instead, if faced with a camping situation on county property, the CRO would contact the county sheriff, and the sheriff could assess the situation and issue any citations if necessary. That way, it'd be more likely that the city would not be held liable if there are any violations of state camping laws. And I will say that I believe at one of the meetings, they stated that if this goes forward, that they're going to institute, I believe, some ordinances that are very similar to what we currently have here in Brookings. The next two had to deal with providing office space for the CROs, and it would be utilizing the substation down in harbor, and I'd like Chief, Lieutenant Dodson, if you guys would address those issues as well, about the utilization of, would it be an issue of utilizing current office space here for the CRO versus utilizing the substation?
No, I think what we could do is, we could certainly look at a combination of the two, using the, what we call Station 7, which is the substation down in harbor. We would certainly have to go and get, go through the sheriff's office, get permission from the sheriff to be able to use that space down there. If he was agreeable to that, then that space could be utilized for follow-up, for meeting with anyone down there. As far as not having them in the department to do things, we would still want them to be working in the department, one, within the department and within their office, because throughout that, we would want to make sure that all CROs are coordinating their actions and what they're doing, downloading everyone on the information that they learn, that they get, working together. And so it'd be important that they still interact, interact on a regular basis with the other CROs. And additionally, it wouldn't all be on at the same time, and so as far as coordinating, working on that computer, I don't think logistically there would be. working on that computer, I don't think logistically there would be issues. It would be similar to what we do in patrol, where if there are two officers that need to use a computer and there's not one, then they just, they coordinate with one another. Hey, I'll go out for a couple hours, that'll allow me to get this done. The other thing that comes up is the software system that we use. While it's the same as the sheriff's office, they wouldn't have access to our justice system down at the sheriff's office. So for them to be able to write a report, it would have to be here at the police department. But as far as using the substation, Station 7 down there in the port with approval, then I certainly think that would be fine to be able to use for follow-up or other interactions and things like that.
So thank you for all of that. I appreciate that. Two of the things I just wanted, again, to bring out, if this were to pass, I think this is really important, of the discussions I've had with the public related to this, these were probably the two largest issues. Number one is, will there be any decrease of services to Brookings? And I want to be clear that that has been discussed, and that is not a part of this at all. This is an increased services with this halftime person to Harbor. So there should be, and that is, the agreement is that is paid for by the county. So I just want to be clear. The second part is, is there will be a review of this, and it is a periodic review to ensure that that continues, that there isn't a decrease in services within the city limits. And that could also be, say, the CRO runs into more than expected issues across the bridge that requires city police backup. Say the sheriff isn't available as their primary call, and so, of course, we wouldn't want them out there by themselves, so maybe a city of Brookings officer would have to respond. If that became an issue as well in our review, then we would have to address that. Our, I just want to be real clear, our, one of our main, at least I believe, definitely mine, as a council focuses in this agreement, was definitely to help the county, but to ensure that we do not take anything away from the citizens of Brookings as far as police coverage. And that has been a focus throughout this whole meeting, and that this isn't paid for on the backs of the citizens of Brookings, but it is a county agreement, and the funds come from the county. So I just wanted to be clear with that.
And there was a last question on there, Mayor and Council, in regards to, there were some discussions about updating the concerns about the county wearing the weight of the patrol response in the event that the CRO would need some additional help, as it was discussed in the workshop. Currently, each one of our CROs are averaging about one request a week for backup, and that's kind of where we're seeing it at this point. And in fact, the protocol will be, if, in the event that the CRO, if the CRO is going to be approaching a group of folks in a particular area, they want to get a hold, they'll get ahold of the sheriff's office ahead of time to let them know that they might need some assistance in that particular area if it's needed. And the protocol will be, as, you know, discussed with the chief, is, you know, if the CRO needs a second officer to show up, that we will reach out to the sheriff's office first as our protocol to see if any deputies are available. If not, then we would definitely, you know, utilize one of ours to go over there. And so, just wanted to clarify that. So it's already based, a protocol. We didn't feel like it really needed to be part of the agreement. The agreement's more about, these are the duties, this is how much it's going to cost and so forth, but the protocol is pretty much already established, so.
Can I ask a follow-up question in regards to your comments on specifically Attorney Lori Cooper's response?
Sure.
And that was, as I'm understanding you, that predominantly it's not county areas that are going to be addressed, but more of that corridor where it's the state? So I just want to clarify that it would be my understanding that if it's an issue of liability to the city, if our CRO takes action in regards to enforcement in the county, that the same would hold true as far as it goes to the state? So it would need to be state officials or county officials that would enforce, not our CRO?
Yeah, and that's a great question, Councilor Pareda. And exactly, it's kind of like what she laid out. In fact, she would say at this point, she would definitely get ahold of the county before, you know, removing anybody from any county property at all, and have them there to assist and back up if there's any sort of citations that need to be written up prior to that as well.
And so then the same would hold true with the state? So they would need, the CRO would need the partnership and enforcement of those other entities to take action?
And currently, correct me if I'm wrong, if we have an issue with an encampment on 101 inside the Brookings, we do get ahold of ODOT? Correct.
Correct. So if there's, excuse me, if there's any type of encampment on ODOT property, then we don't take unilateral action against whoever's camping on that property. We do get ahold of ODOT because ODOT has their, their rules and procedures, which are different than our camping ordinance as far as how someone is, if there's an established camp on there, how that camp is posted, and what the time periods are on that posting and the other rules that follow up from that, which are different than what ours are. So what we do is if there is a camp like that, then the CRO does contact ODOT, works with ODOT on the location, they meet, then they address that issue together. And, and the CRO is there assisting ODOT, who is the one who's posting it and is the one who is talking with the individuals who are there, and then will follow up with, with any removal and cleanup afterwards. So we, we partner with them and we assist them in that, but they're the ones who are actually taking that, that point on the enforcement, since it's their rules that we're, that we're working with on.
So then the CRO's responsibilities really revolve around trying to connect individuals with resources and then making any contact with outside agencies to provide any kind of action of enforcement? Am I understanding that right?
Correct, and that's regardless of the ownership of the property. They always are working to connect whoever those people are with resources. And in fact, before any action is taken to remove an encampment from property, regardless of whose property that is, they, they provide that individual with possible resources for them to connect with, and will contact other resource providers, say, hey, I have this person who, you know, whatever it is, it's a, you know, veteran, that's just the one that pops into my mind. And so then they will, they will contact, you know, maybe it's the VSO, Veteran Services Officer for the county, or the VA, and try to connect them with that, as well as Community kitchens and other places that they can go for food and resources. So, but for ODOT, yes, certainly, but that, that same process is done regardless of the property owners? If that, did I spend too much? Did that answer your question?
No, I believe it did, just clarifying that BPD, Brookings will not be the one going out to enforce in areas that are not our jurisdiction.
Yeah, I mean, they assist with them in the removal, you know? They're there if, if a removal happens, and ODOT, and for this example, ODOT comes back to be able to, you know, remove the property of the person who's been trespassing after the, after the notice period is over, then.
So in the initial contact, would it be upon Brookings to assist?
Generally, the CRO goes out with any property owner.
I'm sorry, I don't mean the CRO specific. I mean additional Brookings units.
No, not unless the CRO requests it. So normally, it's just the CRO by themselves, who will go out and contact that individual on whoever's property it is about an illegal and illegal encampment. But other officers generally are not the ones to do that, and other officers generally don't go with the CRO. It's only at the request of the CRO do they go and assist.
So then siding, the siding portion and that action will be done by other entities, not by Brookings PD in specific?
So within the city of Brookings, then the CRO is the one who does that citation. But according to what Lori recommended there, then if it was on, say, county property, then the protocol would be, or the procedure would be, then contacting the county for that.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm seeking to clarify.
From what we do within the city of Brookings, but yes, that concern.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeking to clarify. Thank you.
I have a question. Was this county property or county jurisdiction?
I think we were talking about county property.
Does a county have any property in Harbor?
Very, very little.
But if it's on private property, what is the typical protocol you guys would expect in that? I mean, if they are, you know, have an illegal encampment on somebody's private property and they want them off?
Well, normally, then what we would do is that, that the CRO works with the property owner through, throughout that process. I think the, the majority of what is being talked about is going to be ODOT property. If there is private property, then they would work with the private property owner to be able to, you know, affect that, that, you know?
And that's not always.
That change, affect that removal or compliance with the law, you know, to whatever degree that that person is willing to work with us.
And that's sometimes not super speedy either, when you're talking about private property, or is it?
Sure. Well, the private property owner would have to be then the one who has made that complaint.
Yes.
Otherwise, we're not going to enforce action on a private property owner's property unless they have an issue with someone camping there. If they do have an issue with someone camping there, then we would come and meet with them, and then we would go to, you know, whoever's illegally camping on that property and address that issue. Obviously, compliance is what we always work for first before any type of, you know, other action is necessitated. But if other action is, then there's a whole process, which is spelled out in law, we have to post for at least 72 hours, and, you know, resources have to be offered, and, and then a removal can happen, you know, within seven days.
So if compliance is refused in a private property situation, whose responsibility is it, based upon Ms. Cooper's advice, to then respond?
Well, I think based on that, though, I haven't, I haven't seen that, so I don't.
So this whole sticky wicket comes, it's been batted around in various levels of court for years now, and it revolves around public property. Private property is, you still have rights to your own property. So if somebody's on your property and you don't want them there, you tell them to leave. If they don't, they get arrested for trespassing. Simple. But in this case, but it would be by the CRO.
Does the county have an agreement with property? I know, I know within the city of Brookings, we have agreements with property owners. Did the county have that same types of agreements?
No, and that's different. That's, that's a proactive program whereby property owners agree on paper, in writing, to pursue criminal charges if officers, for example, in the middle of the night, discover something bad happening on their property. So it's a mutual agreement between the police department and the property owner. Hey, we're going to watch your property, but we need you to stand behind us if we see something going wrong.
And it's really focused on commercial properties, not residential properties or the things like that, which, you know, you know, most likely what a CRO down there would be doing would be working with commercial property owners or obviously public property. But ultimately, if someone refuses to leave and does not comply, now you've committed the crime of trespassing, and so you could be arrested for trespassing then, yes.
I just want to thank all the staff for their time and energy and effort on this whole process. I know it's been lengthy and detailed, and I think that, I think that it's important. I think this is a pretty weighty decision. And I want to state very clearly that I think it's very important that we, cities, partners, county partners, other stakeholders, figure out ways to work together for common solutions, because I think it's only going to become more and more important and necessary. I think we've kind of fumbled our way through the process, and I think that hopefully we can learn lessons from that going forward. I'm appreciative of staff's time to get legal counsel, legal counsel and questions answered and responded to. And I do believe this one, this one particularly into the enforcement, I think is maybe a little bit more likely to tread, but the rest of them, I think those answers have been really put to bed. So I appreciate that work and those answers. And I, I also want to state that one thing I think we need to do better is involving all the stakeholders in the public discussion. Workshops don't really afford that. I'd like to see proactive steps to harbor community, Brookings constituents, every stakeholder involved. I think that's important, especially when we're making really big decisions that involve many different levels. So I'd like to see us move forward in the future, being proactive in those ways, and really getting input before we start making plans. So I think, again, I hope that we can all move forward in more clear directions in the future, and just want to say, you know, thanks for the diligence and willingness to really answer questions and make sure we have expert opinion.
Thank you.
I have several comments. First, echoing what Councilor Pareda just said, I appreciate the minutes, time that city staff and the police department have put into this. So thank you for that. I am only one vote on this, but I oppose this agreement for several reasons. First of all, the county came to the city wanting the city, to contract with the city to provide law enforcement, law enforcement services in Harbor. That begins because of a severely constrained budget on the county's part, but also a conflict between the Board of Commissioners and the sheriff. I don't, I don't feel the city should get involved with that conflict. You know, we decided that we don't want to be involved in providing regular law enforcement patrols, but we looked at this as an alternative. I believe with this contract, there's still some liability and some expenses to the city of Brookings. Our number one priority is to the residents of the city of Brookings, the property taxpayers, the people who pay water bills here in town. And we should not be providing services outside the city limits that could cost more money for people in the city of Brookings. And some examples of this, if backup is needed, administrative costs, over time, you know, there could, there could be costs that are more than what this agreement brings to the Again, our responsibility is to the people of the city of Brookings. There is a problem in Harbor because of the lack of law enforcement patrols. I probably spend more time in Harbor than anybody else in here, so I know, I'm very familiar with what's going on there, and I think that this is just going to push the problem around. It's still not going, it's just a Band-Aid on this overall problem. If the county has money for law enforcement services, it should be given to the sheriff's office. That's the job of the sheriff in every county in Oregon, is to provide law enforcement services. But there's a conflict between them, and both sides haven't been able to come to the table and solve that. But again, I don't think it's, it's our job to get in the middle of this and help extend that problem. If the, if the county has money for law enforcement, it should be given. If the county has money for law enforcement, it should be given to the sheriff's office. The county's discussed having a similar community resource officer program in other parts of the county. If they can do that, then they can take care of Harbor as well. If they want to use opioid settlement funds for that, so be it. But the, it's, our job is to the people of the city of Brookings, and it's not to the people of Harbor. I know we have to deal with the problem that exists there, right on our, you know, right next to the city of Brookings, but I don't think that this is going to solve that problem. It's just going to move it around, and we'll still have the same problem. And that's why my one of five votes is against this.
I share some of, some of Counselor Martin's sentiments, and I don't like seeing us getting involved in county politics. One of the concerns that I have after looking at the full packet is that the offer to reimburse the city for salary of this officer, but none of the support costs, I mean, the real cost of the officer is inclusive of much more than just their salary. It's their patrol vehicle, it's their health insurance, it's their retirement. It's all those things that go into having an employee, the true cost. And I don't think it includes all of that. I was definitely opposed to patrolling. You know, I was glad to see that that was taken out, but I have concerns, you know, initially, you know, I wanted to know, are we taking money from the sheriff and giving it to Brookings to do sheriff's duties? And that's still the way it kind of feels, even though they're saying the money is coming from opioid settlement funding. I don't know how that works mechanically, whether or not that's truly independent of sheriff's funding. If it is, then that might resolve some of my concerns, because I hate to see the county taking money from the sheriff department for services that the sheriff should be providing. But if this is truly an independent funding source that has nothing to do with the sheriff's department, then maybe that answers, maybe that's a question I have, I guess. I know that it alludes to that in the contract, that, that the money could come from opioid settlement funding or from other funding sources, but I guess it just wasn't really clear to me whether, whether it's truly independent of the sheriff's operating budget, or money that could be used by the sheriff for other purposes.
One other follow-up comment, too. A lot of this, a lot of the visible problem there is happening on the ODOT right-of-way. And occasionally, we'll see the Oregon State Police out there enforcing this and moving people along, and then other times, the problem just expands and compounds. So there's an issue of how, you know, how big of a priority is this for the Oregon State Police and for ODOT? And we should be asking them to do their job as well.
Well, and that, just to add on to that again, sorry to, reminded me, you know, we had that workshop, and that was one of the things that came out of the workshop. If truly the majority of the issue is within ODOT's right-of-way, then, then I definitely support the city, and hopefully the county stands beside us in contacting our state representatives to ensure that, that their property that's adjacent to our city, that's having, you know, negative impacts on our tourism and the quality of life, is being managed in a way that, that's appropriate. So I don't see that as any part of this agreement, and maybe that's not really part of this agreement, but that was definitely something that came out of that workshop, was that there should be some, some type of contact made with both ODOT, State Police, and the governor's office, in my opinion.
Any other comments, questions? I have a few. Unfortunately, I think maybe for our workshops, not every counselor was able to attend every one, because a lot of these questions that are coming up have been answered. I don't want to carry water for the county, it's not my job, but I do know that many of those that were just asked have been answered in those workshops. Unfortunately, maybe they weren't heard, or maybe the counselor wasn't there at that workshop. So there's that. I will say that I share some of that. I, I believe I'm definitely more in support, because from the get-go, I don't know how much mail is received by the other counselors related to the issue up the river, sort of the issues in Harbor, outside of our city limits, but I know I get quite a bit. I guess the problem is patrol. It isn't our, it isn't our concern as in city limits, I definitely agree with that. I also agree it should not be at all on the back of the city of Brookings taxpayers in addition to. But I think you have to be blind not to see how that flows into our city. I personally walk my dog, sometimes twice a day, but at least once a day. That flow of transience, flow of nuisance, quite frankly, I've had multiple times where I had, had to actually, not thankfully not get physical, but had verbal confrontations with the frequenters across the bridge. And trust me, it's not out of my, my, my coming forward to them. It's, it's definitely me trying to stick to myself, but having difficulty doing so. So seeing that, I think there is no wall that separates us, and so I don't want this to turn into a finger pointing. I don't think it should, related to what the sheriff's responsibilities are and aren't. I will say that obviously, there's not a lot going on on that side of the bridge or up the river. Obviously. So in partnership, which I think we should be partners in helpful, and we shouldn't get in between the county and the sheriff, that's their problem, those who are willing to do something about it, especially in my case, when I reach out, the only ones who were willing to have a dialogue about this issue were the commissioners. And so reaching out, at least they were, they were able to have this dialogue. And I think we kicked a lot of possibilities around. And this sort of was what fell out of that, this halftime CRO. I really don't know how effective it will be. I know statistically speaking, it's an effective position. Statistically speaking, for the city of Brookings, it's been an effective position. So I like that. Time would tell. I think on a lot of these questions we have, time would tell. I think that's why it's extremely important. And anything like this, that's sort of an agreement, but we don't know how it's going to shake out, to say, hey, every three months, this needs to be reassessed. If this is costing our city taxpayers one dime more, then we are going to go have discussion with the county. But at any point, getting in between the sheriff and them, that's not what this is about. This is about picking up the ball that is not being picked up, and in a partnership that truly, and I believe directly affects the citizens of Brookings. And to think that if, if nothing is done outside of our borders, that this influx isn't going to come in, and already hasn't, which is an increase in crime, which is an increase in, it's just simple stuff like garbage, trash, all these other things that just continue to occur, I think we're fooling ourselves. So at the end of the day, I really, I believe it is something, and I believe it is worth a try. Not on the back of our taxpayers. I do know that this is costing us, the city of Brookings, a lot already. I don't know how many calls our police are going across the bridge on already, but it's a lot. And if we can subdue that now with the CRO already out there, halftime not on our bill, maybe this saves the city some money, quite honestly. But if we don't try it, we don't know. And I have seen probably city cars across the bridge more than I've definitely seen sheriffs, and probably state police and ODOT. And that's without an agreement. So again, I believe we're probably burying our head in the sand to think that we're not already paying a price for this. So again, I'm only one out of five votes as well, but I think I made it clear where I stand, and that's all I have to say.
So one follow-up comment. I listened to the workshops that I did not attend, so I'm aware of what was said there. If the county commissioners are concerned about what's happening in Harbor and other unincorporated areas of Curry County, their number one priority should be finding a way to fund the sheriff's office. Instead of fighting with them, instead of going to the Marine Board and trying to take funds away, they need to, they need to find a way, every, they're, these are full-time elected officials, they should be focusing on finding funding for the sheriff's office and not fighting with the sheriff. If Chief McCray had 12 officers, and all of a sudden, we decided to cut funding of 10, and you have two officers, would it be right to say, hey, how come you don't have 24/7 patrols? How come there's something going on at Fred Meyer, or something happening at Azoya Park, or something happening at Harris Beach? How come you don't have officers all the time at these places? The problem is the lack of funding, which the county has been in a, in a bad position for a long time. But the solution is the county commissioners finding sources of funding for law enforcement.
I do believe the commissioners properly addressed that in our workshop by stating that even at full funding, there were issues of responses and enforcement. So I do think, at least in part, that addresses some of those concerns. I personally, I know that I don't get anywhere near the number of comments that you do, Mayor. But I do have to say that of the stakeholders that have provided me directly with input, the only ones I have heard supportive of the idea are not within the city limits, and those that I have heard concerned about us proceeding are.
So any more comments or questions? I think we've bantered this around a lot. I personally would like to put it to a vote tonight. The only, I guess I would throw this out here because of just a thought I had while Counselor Monberg was, was talking, and I don't know maybe if this is even worthwhile or not, but I'll throw it out there. Is there a request or a clarification that can be made, I'll put it that way, on the actual costs? So therefore, those hidden costs, which I do agree with Counselor Monberg, that are there, it isn't just an hourly wage, right? It's, it's other costs. I don't pretend to know, especially with, within the police department, what that would be, but that those are covered by the county and not on the backs of the city.
When, when we were approached, we did take into account in HR terms with all the roll-ups, with costs for, you know, pension, healthcare, all those things that normally, and that those were rolled into the, the total figure with an additional 10% for admin fee as well. So to answer your question, yes, on that side of it. But, you know, I'm sure as we're going to find out, if the council moves forward with this, there might be some other ancillary costs that maybe we didn't consider that we can bring back. And we've talked to the commissioners about, you know, if there's a need to bring back an amendment for additional costs that we didn't foreshadow, then they're amenable to that as well, so.
And it was my understanding that those ancillary costs in regards to the employee in particular were covered. I do think Counselor Monberg brought up other costs, gasoline, vehicle wear and tear and maintenance, other issues of that sort. Have those been calculated or considered in any way?
I don't know, do we, when we were doing all this, it's been a couple of months since we sat down, and do you remember with regards to the fuel and maintenance of the vehicles?
We've talked it over with the county.
Yeah.
But it's not in this, in this...
Okay. That's, that's a great point, and it's something that could be added to this as well.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, but I'm going to make it with a correction, or an addition, if you will, that says, let me see if I can state this in the correct way. I recommend to authorize the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Brookings and Curry County and a halftime community resource officer services with the added, or ensuring that all ancillary costs will be covered. Not just hourly wages, but all, all costs that will accompany this are covered.
One second.
Call a question?
Counselor Martin?
No.
Counselor Fulton?
Yes.
Counselor Pareda?
I'm going to have a stay.
Counselor Monberg?
I feel like there's some unanswered questions as part of that, so I'm going to say no, because I think, I think we would have to change this contract if it were to include some of those other ancillary costs and total costs of, of having an employee, because this agreement is very specific in the dollar amount and very unspecific in what, what that dollar amount covers. So I'm going to say no.
Any other questions?
Yes.
We have two and two. I'm not sure how, if that fails or fails.
Motion failed.
I believe it does fail.
It does.
It has to be a majority.
Motion failed.
Motion failed. All right. Thank you. Good conversation. Moving on to item G2, civil engineering service contract extensions. We know who he is.
Thank you, Mayor Hodges, members of the council. This is a request to extend engineering services for three civil engineering firms that we have on contract. Staff prepared an advertised request for proposal back in 2022. We received three responses from three individual firms, Dyer, Civil West, and Jacobs. That was 2022, it was a three-year contract, so here we are, looking to do an extension. Staff is recommending we enter into as needed service contract extensions with all three firms to meet the demand for infrastructure projects we have coming up in the next three years. Projects would be assigned to firms through a task order, that's how they have been. Project assignment considers factors such as the capacity of the firm to undertake the type of work that we request of them, and in a timely manner, their fee, and mostly their technical expertise with the type of project that we request from them. Attached, essentially, a sample of each contract, their hourly rate sheet. If you have any questions?
Can you break down just a little bit for me what each of these engineering firms are, you would use them for, so I would assume some of them for project management, others for, you know, I don't know, ways...
their technical expertise with the type of project that we request from them. Attached, essentially, a sample of each contract, their hourly rate sheet. If you have any questions?
Can you break down just a little bit for me what each of these engineering firms are, you would use them for, so I would assume some of them for project management, others for, you know, I don't know, wastewater treatment engineering. Maybe if you could just break it down.
So Civil West and Dyer, I would say are probably in the same pool. Jacobs, of course, you may recall, we had two contracts for the USDA rural development projects, which we had Dyer work on the collection system, which included the pump stations, and then we had Jacobs work on the wastewater treatment plant, which we, you know, they're our, they're our operator. They have a contract with us to operate our wastewater treatment plants, so we feel like that was their expertise. So we, you know, we contract out not just these three firms, we have as-needed contract services with these three firms. We use other firms as well for specific types of work. So a great example, that would be Century West, we use them for our airport. We've used other engineering firms for smaller types of projects that fit their, fit their groove, so to speak. Stover, for example, we use for Azalea Park, Ball Field Parking Lot. We've used other firms for master plans, so. But these, but these particular ones, the three that we have these contracts with, they're, they're really specific to municipal infrastructure-type projects, and they have the capacity to handle. A little, you an example, Dyer currently is working on eight projects right now. One of those projects has 14 individual projects within it, which is the USDA project.
But this, these, this contract that we're extending is essentially for on-call services, though, right?
It's as-needed services, exactly.
Because we, we would put out to bid if there was a project or something, some type of a contract.
Well, these, these, the, these engineering firms are working on projects that are specific in our, to our requests, which is our infrastructure projects.
So is, is that kind of saying that we don't put out, forbid, projects that come up? I think, I think that's kind of the question, right?
Just trying to understand the difference between, because, you know, obviously, the city operates, it's got its own way of doing things that maybe I'm not totally familiar with. But, but say, for example, we have, you know, some big project and we, like, say, for example, the wastewater treatment thing, we put that out to bid, and, you know, Jacobs and a few others, they'll, they'll bid on it, and we end up going with the low bidder, the best proposal. It sounds that these contracts are, these are just sort of open-ended kind of agreements that we have with them for a set dollar value for services rendered as needed. Is that, is that what these are essentially for, or? Okay.
And I don't know, I mean, I don't have the history of, of why we established this type of contract for city engineering services. It's very common for a city to have an engineering firm that they work with specifically, and it's not uncommon for us, because that's the way we've had our, you know, we had a firm for decades that we worked with. We transitioned to this firm, and then, most recently, in 2022, we, we decided to make an agreement with all three of them, so that we had some, some, you know, flexibility there. If one firm got too busy, we can get, you know, send work to the other firm.
Okay.
And then there's, there's project-specific things that, that come up that, that make one firm better than the other.
Gotcha.
More expertise, I should say.
I appreciated staff responding to, you know, just my questions as to why we didn't put out, and I thought that was clear and made really good sense. So I appreciate that understanding.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
I'll move to authorize the city manager to negotiate civil engineering service contract extensions with the Dyer partnerships, Civil West Engineering, and Jacobs.
I'll second. Call a question?
Counselor Fulton?
Yes.
Counselor Pareda?
Yes.
Counselor Monberg?
Yes.
Counselor?
Yes.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to G3, our Ford Lightning electric truck purchase. You, Tony?
Yep, thank you. You may, may recall, we applied for the Carb Reduction Program grant that offered this opportunity to purchase vehicles and, and electric vehicles and, and install a charging station here at City Hall. This is an agreement to purchase the two vehicles for that, through that grant program. I've highlighted some items in here. The total cost, $148,011 and some change breaks down the ODOT's share and the City of Brookings' share for the cost of that, which is, we are at a 10.27% cost. Our required match is a 10.27. So we are looking to purchase two Ford electric, Ford Lightnings, one for the department and the other one for the police department for use. So I don't know, if you have any questions, I look, I've highlighted everything in the staff report.
I appreciate the city chasing this one down. This is one of those grants. It was brought up in a Southwest Area Commission on Transportation meeting I was in, and Tony was in as well, and we talked about it real briefly, and I really appreciate the city going after this. Initially, there was discussion about putting in charging stations and some other things, but those kind of fell through, but, but ultimately, what we, what we ended up coming down to is, you know, hey, we're, we're paying $15,000 for two brand-new trucks for our police department and for our public works department. I mean, that's a win. It's a little bit of money out of the city's budget, but that's, that's money that they give to another city. And our city, and, you know, was competitive and, and got that money for, for us. So I really support it, and I really appreciate the efforts of the city going after, going after some of these grant funds, and also, you know, the, the other ones that they're going after. I think that we're being really aggressive with that, and I think I'm happy to see it, so.
Yeah, and I do encourage a real positive article to come out at some point in time, just stating all the benefits and what has happened here with these two. I think it's a great thing to put out to our community, for sure.
Yes, after tonight's meeting, we'll be drafting up a nice little press release.
I, I also wanted to actually point out that because of staff efforts and the federal tax credit, then in the end, it won't even cost us that $15,000 that we anticipate getting that money back, which, I mean, two cars and a charging station for $200, I don't think that can be beat. So I am, I know that revenue streams are always a need and a concern, and so I'm grateful for hard work that takes that out of our direct pool of resources that are necessary and needed. Two, two vehicles is a big, a big support for our community and for our staff, so I'm really excited that we're able, we're awarded, are able to move forward, and I'm very happy to support this.
Are there other agencies that are using those charging stations?
Just for the City of Brookings. We, we reduced the scope of our project and eliminated the charging stations downtown and focused primarily on, on our fleet and charging stations here at City Hall. They, they will be behind eventually a closed gate and not accessible to the public.
So that brings up another question, and so is that, will that come before the council as a separate independent item, the charging stations to support these vehicles? Is this just for the vehicles right now?
It's just for the vehicles, that's correct. The, the charging station portion of the project, which we will call Phase Two, we'll put that out to bid and have that, that, that'll come to, in front of council as well.
Thanks.
Good question. Thank you for that.
Any other comments, discussion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Kendall Ford, a bend for two Ford Lightning electric trucks under statewide price agreement.
My second.
Call a question?
Ms. Pareda?
Counselwoman, yes, yes. Sorry, that threw me for a minute. Yes.
Counselor Monberg?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Fulton?
Yes.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Moving on to item H, a non-action item, August 2025 vouchers. Any discussion? If not, we'll move right on to item I, remarks from the mayor, councilors, and city manager. Been a lot said already tonight. Anything, anyone have anything more?
I will add how much I appreciated Gordon Clay coming in and talking about the 741, 741, and about the suicide prevention month and the bullying prevention month in October. While I'm in the schools, I, I see things and I hear things, and it is a tireless work to continue to help support our kids in crisis, and I just appreciate his efforts to keep that going, and just the overall information to our community about how important it is to reach out to others and to those, and if we see something, say something, because even one life is too many.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I will be headed on Friday to a half-day municipal essentials, Part II, and I'm grateful that I have free daytime hours to attend those types of trainings. I find them highly beneficial. While I know that's not the case for others, I, I do know Essential Training One is available by LOC Online, and I'd highly encourage each of you to attend that training. It's, we're all new to this, we're all learning for the first time, and I think it's invaluable for us to pursue education to help us rightly understand our role and responsibilities. So, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Martin, Monberg, city manager?
I have one quick thing that I just, I had talked to Lori Cooper before the meeting started. Starting October the 3rd, I believe, the 2nd or 3rd is when the League of Oregon Cities Conference will be taking place in Portland, myself, council member Pareda, and the mayor will be attending that. And we need to, real quickly, nominate a voting delegate and an alternate for the meeting. So I think, but, you know, I'll open it up to the floor real quickly, but she says we can do this informally tonight, just to have it on the record that we do have a, a voting delegate and an alternate, so.
But are you included in that as city manager?
I, I could be, but I think it'd be better to have our elects do that, so.
All right. Why nominate Counselor Pareda?
That's my pick, too. So, so you have a...
I was, I was going to say that I did it last year, and so you should have the opportunity.
You're the experienced one.
That's right. She's going to bring the experience to the...
And I'm happy to be the alternate, then.
Okay. So make a motion in a second, real quick.
Oh, just between us or everybody?
Everybody, real quick. So we can, if everybody's, it really doesn't have to be a vote. If everybody's okay, then we'll just go say...
Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right.
Nobody's going to fight for that position.
Yeah, I didn't see any...
I'm sorry. But she did say it could be an informal, just as long as we designate somebody. Okay.
All right.
I apologize. And real quickly, I, I mentioned this to the council on Friday, but I want the public to know this as well, and I know we're working on a press release, I think it's going out this week, to talk about the Bud Cross Park. We had received a $100,000 grant from the Oregon Parks and Rec that will help pay for the project, adding new playground equipment, paving the walk paths, picnic areas, planting new trees. So this is a, it's a, it's a real tremendous thing that we got. Unfortunately, we didn't get the entire grant to pay the parking lot as well, but this is a start, and I know Wendy and I have already talked about it, she's going to continue to go out there and try to obtain more funding for the, the park as well. So anyway, little feather in our cap that, that I think is, is great. And, you know, anytime, any council, if you see opportunities that we may not have caught, or you may have heard about at a conference, please let us know, because we, we funnel, I know Tony and I and the staff, we funnel all the way to Wendy, and she's great at tracking and keeping track of what's going on. And so, anyway, just wanted to let everybody know that we're really excited about that as well.
I have a small part in that, in my paid job, and so I know how much work that is and effort just to secure the grant, and that's very light in the requirements to actually fulfill the legal requirements. And so I'm really grateful. I know it's extra, a lot extra on the plate and a lot of extra hoops to jump through, but in the end, it benefits our community greatly, so thanks to staff for that.
Thank you.
I wanted to echo that, and I wanted to thank the staff for the, the hard work on that application. That was an impressive presentation that Wendy made to the council during the workshop about the, the plans for the park, and I think that went a long way to helping the city receive that grant for just having a, a extremely high-quality application and presentation.
And, and I'll just echo that as well, and say, for a community of, of our size to have somebody that her caliber, you know, that can do grants and projects like that is, is, is a true blessing, and, you know, someday when she retires, there's going to be big shoes to fill, so.
Agreed.
Definitely. One other thing, as you know, I said, as the City of Brookings representative for the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, we did, we were able to successfully onboard a new airport director, his name's Sean Rosenthal. He has a good amount of experience working in private aircraft industry, and we think he's going to be a good fit. The previous airport director went to Arcata, I think he's since resigned from that, but we were without for a little while, so looking forward to having him, having him onboard, and looking forward to continue to provide positive updates to you as I get him from the Border Coast Airport Authority. I think, I think they're doing a great job out there with the vans there, and they've increased their services to, to, twice a day to, to Oakland and twice a week down to the LA area, which I think is a great resource for, resource for our community. So, anyway.
Thank you for all your volunteer work. That's a lot, spread out. I have a few things as well. I, I wanted to, I guess, thurdle the, the congrats on the Bud Cross $100,000 grant. That's phenomenal. Enough's been said, but that's great. I did want to just, you know, in light of tonight's vote, just thank the commissioner, county commissioners for being at least those to come to the table to discuss options for our issues locally, just outside of our city limits, because those who I believe should be coming to the table haven't. I'll leave it at that, but, but thank you, county commissioners, for that, and police leadership for all the time, and, and city leadership and work that's went into working on that agreement. And then locally, you know, and this, you know, I sort of thought, is this something to come, you know, that belongs here or not? And I think it does, because locally, the, the school board's been through a lot, the nation's been through a lot. So I'm, I'm going to bring this up tonight, take it for what it's worth, but I think it needs addressed, at least from one person, so. I wrote it out because I wouldn't be able to shoot from the cuff probably appropriately. So essentially, it's been a crazy couple of weeks in our country. I think it's safe to say the most talked-about event in those couple of weeks, because there has been a, a lot of events, sad events, but probably the most talked about was the assassination of Charlie Kirk. And so for me, I was, I asked the question, why? Why is this so talked about? He wasn't a king or a prince or royalty of any kind. He wasn't a famous sports star or a famous actor. He wasn't a president of a country, a governor, a senator, a representative, a commissioner, a mayor, or a councilperson. I don't even think he was the head of an HOA. I mean, I don't know, you know, as far as that goes, but, so why was his death so impactful? And why did it make so many headlines? So no doubt, part of the reason was how public this horrific and disgusting act was. It was done in broad daylight in front of the world. It was shocking. So the way it was carried out was part, I'm sure, of, of why it was, was so felt, but that doesn't explain all of it to me. So in fact, Mr. Kirk's death was so impactful that yesterday, his last I saw, over 100 million people streamed his memorial. Again, why? So I believe, at least in part, it's because of what he said and stood for, and it resonated with millions of people. with millions of people. He said things that others wanted to say but were too scared to say. And to add to that, he did what he said, and he said what he believed. He wasn't a hypocrite, and that's pretty rare in today's world. Whether it was his political beliefs or his faith, he did not waver. And in the end, what did he get for that? He got assassinated. There is a saying, when discourse ends, violence begins. And I think he said that, but I don't know who the first was to say it, so I don't know who to give credit for, but I believe it is true. And this cold-blooded murderer and his supporters got to the point that they could say no more. So they went to violence, and now they have the gall to try and justify that violence because of his words. You may ask, why does this need to be brought up at a city council meeting in Brookings, Oregon? We're nowhere near that. What is the point, mayor? You know, stick to local issues only. But here's my point, and it's because it's a First Amendment issue, something we must never compromise as a city, as a county, as a state, as a country, and we must never be scared to speak, especially about our faith and what we believe. I set in a nonpartisan seat as the mayor of Brookings, but I do not set up here as an empty vessel devoid of faith. And it is my faith and that faith that Mr. Kirk had that so many people, many I believe for the first time, are now asking about. And those of us who claim to be Christian need to give the answer to them, and the best way to give that answer is through our actions. What they saw in Mr. Kirk is what they should see in all of us, not hypocrites, but genuine believers. They need to see that Christianity is not a part of us, but it is all of us, and it is in everything we do, even as a mayor. It isn't a piece of my life, it is my life, and I nor any of you should ever be fearful of expressing their beliefs. So don't get wrapped up in the vitriol. Don't spew hate for hate. Don't put others down just to build yourself up, but learn to forgive and do so out of love, a love for each other, a love for your neighbor, and a love we received from our Savior. And never forget, violence is not the answer, and never will be. So in three or four weeks, when the news cycle changes, and it will, and the short attention span of our social media minds has then focused everyone to something else, we must not forget what has occurred over the last two weeks, where what started as a horrific event on September 10th in Arizona then culminated yesterday, or sorry, in Utah, then culminated yesterday down in Arizona, where what we saw was hate get a good look at love. And I believe that needs to be the long-lasting lesson to all of us. So that's my two cents.
Really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that said, I, anything?